Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. For the record, tonight is Tuesday, December 5th, and the time is 7:00 PM. This is the official, regular, uh, meeting of the Nashville Town Council. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. We're gonna get ourselves organized and get moving forward for the next two years. We have, uh, some people we need to swear in, and we'll move forward. Uh, we will start now with administering oath of office, uh, with the Honorable John J. Colvolo to our first person who needs to be sworn, our newly-elected person, Kate Burns. Kate? If you'll come forward, Judge, if you'll come over.
Is this Ms. Burns?
This is Ms. Burns.
Ms. Burns, come here, please. You don't mind swearing, do you? Okay, if you would like to handle that, raise your right hand. If you don't mind what I'll do is I'll just read it, and then at the end of it, you can say, "I do." Is that all right? Okay. "I, Kate Burns, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as councilmember of the town of Nashville, so help me God." Congratulations. I want to have you sign this, and would you want to do Mr. Taylor now, too?
Yeah, we'll do him after Kate's in the chair. Soon as she gets her luggage here.
I'm trying to use my best pimper.
Yes, you should.
Alrighty.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Taylor?
Mm, okay.
You'll go around?
Yeah. Alrighty.
Oh, yours.
Thank you very much.
The dude's about me, I'd like for my wife to come and hold it. Certainly, certainly. You said your wife? This is my wife. Not your daughter? This is my wife. Okay, good. Excellent. And if you'll just read, I'll just go ahead and read it, and then you say, "I, Larry D. Taylor, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as councilmember of the town of Nashville, so help me God." Agreed. Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge. Excellent. Okay, Judge, if you'll hold on, we'll see if we have a mayor pro-
Is it okay if I just have a seat?
Sure, just have a seat. Let's see if we can, who's gonna be mayor pro temp. Now, accordingly, since this is our organizational meeting, our ordinance has told us that we elect a mayor pro temp for two years, uh, following each election. The chair is now open for nominations for mayor pro temp.
Mayor, based on the procedures that we've normally done in the past on a rotating basis, I nominate Charles Taylor.
Yeah, thanks, our second?
A second.
Okay. There's a, uh, motion and a second to nominate Charles Taylor for mayor pro temp for two years. Hold in favor, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, you're elected. Sir, will you go be sworn?
Yes.
Your honor?
Do you all want to write in his name for it here?
Okay, let's do that.
Alrighty. And do you have a Bible for Mr. Taylor?
I got one.
If you put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. "I, Charles Taylor, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution and laws of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of temp of the town of Nashville, so help me God." Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Alrighty. Thanks, thank you very much. Thank you. You're free to go, you're welcome.
Well, thank you. I might go, I think I was supposed to have a supper with my son somewhere.
Okay.
Thank you for inviting me, thank you, folks.
Enjoy your dinner, thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the business, on the agenda, deals with, uh, town council appointments and assignments to different boards and liaisons. If you look under your first blue tab, you'll see the committees that we have. I'm sorry. Look under the pink tab. Have I lost it? No, I haven't. Well, I was just, oh, here it is. Yeah, it is the, okay. The page before the blue tab. Okay. Uh, you'll see that, uh, the committees that we have are the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments, where I've been a representative for that for a number of years, and the alternate is our town manager, and the Upper Coastal Plain Rural Planning Organization, which Charles Taylor's been a member of for a number of years, and she, the alternate of that will be Kate Burns. We have inserted your name in all the places where Michael Coleman was, so that's the only change of what we've been doing for years here. On the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Advisory Board, we have Kate Burns as our liaison person, and Larry Taylor's our alternate, and our library advisory board, our representative is, uh, Charles Taylor, and the alternate is Larry Taylor, and on the Rocky Mount Metropolitan Planning Organization is Louise Hinton, and the backup for that is Charles Taylor, and the Carolina Gateways Partnership Board of Directors is, uh, our liaison is Larry Taylor, and the backup for that is myself, and the Town Employee Safety Committee, our liaison there is Louise Hinton, and the alternate will be Kate Burns. Uh, with all that said and done, does the chair hear a motion to approve the, uh, assignments as they've been?
It's a motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we approve the assignments. Has there been discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, now, we're in business for two years. Okay, the next item, three, uh, is a consideration of minutes from our Friday, October 20 meeting and our Wednesday, November 8 meeting. Uh, does the chair hear a motion of minutes to be approved, or are there any corrections?
Uh, there's some corrections to the October 20 minutes.
Okay, where are we?
Um, it says Kara from UNC School of Government is scheduled to join the meeting.
Which page are you on?
Uh, first page.
Okay. We're on the first page, a lot of words there.
Under one.
One.
She was scheduled to join the meeting, and she never showed.
Yeah.
And that needs to be noted, because we made a lot of adjustments to accommodate her.
Yeah, okay. Who did not show, that's correct. Okay, the chair here approve of the minutes for these corrections?
With those corrections, I move that they be approved.
Okay, is discussion?
It's a motion.
There being none, all in favor, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, the library.
Any of them here?
Any of the library people here? I see Emily's here.
I think one of them is here.
Okay.
Well, two of them, two of them are here.
Good, good. Thank you for coming. I can't see. I need a mirror. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Uh, for the, uh, Parks and Recreation, uh, and Cultural Resources Committee, we've had a person nominated, recommended by our director, Kirby Winston, for a two-year term, and Kirby's here tonight, I saw him come through, there he is back there. Kirby, thanks for being here. Does the chair hear a motion, we approve, uh, this recommendation?
It's a motion.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve, uh, Mr. Winston for the Recreation Board. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Congratulations. Thank you for serving. And for the Planning Board, we have recommendations, uh, some to continue, Shirley House and Ann Collier and Dwight Jordan, um, and one new appointment, Bill Lump, uh, who's been recommended to fill the term, uh, previously held by Kate Burns, they've got elected. Uh, does the chair hear a motion, we approve these, uh, these names for the Planning Board?
It's a motion.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the names as recommended by the Planning Board. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, the library.
Any of them here?
Any of the library people here? I see Emily's here.
I think one of them is here.
Okay.
Well, two of them, two of them are here.
Good, good. Thank you for coming. I can't see. I need a mirror. Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Uh, for the, uh, Parks and Recreation, uh, and Cultural Resources Committee, we've had a person nominated, uh, recommended by our director, Kirby Winston, for a two-year term, and Kirby's here tonight, I saw him come through, there he is back there. Kirby, thanks for being here. Does the chair hear a motion, we approve, uh, this recommendation?
It's a motion.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve, uh, Mr. Winston for the Recreation Board. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Congratulations. Thank you for serving. And for the Planning Board, we have recommendations, uh, some to continue, Shirley House and Ann Collier and Dwight Jordan, um, and one new appointment, Bill Lump, uh, who's been recommended to fill the term, uh, previously held by Kate Burns, they've got elected. Uh, does the chair hear a motion, we approve these, uh, these names for the Planning Board?
It's a motion.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the names as recommended by the Planning Board. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, you'll notify those people. And we have, uh, three persons to continue for the Board of Adjustment for three years, from January 2018 to January 2021, which are reappointments for Ross Strickland, Eddie Thomas, and Tommy Sasser Jr., uh, all whom are continuing along. Does the chair hear a motion, we approve these names for the Board of Adjustment?
It's a motion.
Okay, they've been moved and seconded, we approve these names. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, you'll notify those people. And we have, uh, three persons to continue for the Board of Adjustment for three years, from January 2018 to January 2021, which are reappointments for Ross Strickland, Eddie Thomas, and Tommy Sasser Jr., uh, all whom are continuing along. Does the chair hear a motion, we approve these names for the Board of Adjustment?
It's a motion.
Okay, they've been moved and seconded, we approve these names. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, they are so nominated. Let me try to find my agenda here. Okay, the next item coming up is a request from the schools for a crosswalk, uh, one across Virginia Avenue and one across Jones Street, as I understand there, what they want to do. Uh, Hank, could you bring us up to date on that, or maybe Brian? I tried to follow their direction here. What I understand is one across Virginia Avenue now, they want to move down the street a block, they put one across Jones Streets, is that correct?
Um, the best I can tell, Quentin and I have had several conversations. Um, we do still have a walkable community, and there is a couple of people that walk down South Collins, and when they get to the end of South Collins and the sidewalk ends, there is no crosswalk to encourage them to cross over to Virginia, across Virginia onto the school side. That's where the conversation started, and if you all recall, there's town streets and there's DOT streets. A town street, we can control where crosswalks go and how signage is placed and so forth and so on, but what we learned last couple of months is that we have a lot of ordinances out there that do and don't match what we're actually doing, so what I'm really asking for is a month to go out there and see where the crosswalks actually are, make sure our ordinance match up with those, and then also make sure any kind of crosswalks that we're gonna decide to put, if we decide to, that they're safe, and that we have handicap ramps to match to other handicap ramps, and obviously I'll get, um, the PD to help me on this and other departments as needed. Um, we do have one on Jones Street that crosses over, and there is one on Virginia, but he's asking for additional ones, but I just need a little bit of time to study it.
Okay. Is it, will the council, we give the, uh, the planning department a month to study this issue and move forward with it?
Sounds good.
Okay. Very good. Also, uh, in your, in your work, would you check, you know, who owns Virginia Avenue?
Who owns it?
Yeah, I was told one time that was a state street, I was told one time it's a county street because the school buses and stuff was on it, and I heard the same story about Jordan Street next door, but that may or may not be true, that's just what I've always heard.
Yes, sir, and they're on our Powell Bill report, but I'll double-check that and have a straight answer for you next month.
Well, if they're on the Powell Bill report, then they're ours.
Yes, sir.
Well, we don't want to change that.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is consideration of tax releases. This is something that came to us from the county for a number of persons whose tax releases have been, for one reason or another, build an area decreased, build an error decreased in value or something, from properties that I am to assume is in Nashville, and I'm not sure what we're doing here by approving this, because this is all on the county tax record. Well, we are supposed to approve it, so it'll be legal both ways. Did I say that correct? This is something I've never seen before, and the chair will entertain a motion to follow the law here, to approve these tax releases.
It's a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Accordingly, you'll notify the county, we've complied with their wishes. Okay, the next item coming up are amendments, uh, for the budget of 15, 16, and 17, of three things. Uh, the first is, uh, money from the, uh, from the, from the public education group that comes to us from the state, it's just a grant, which pays for, uh, Mr. Small and his, his activity. Uh, the other's money we received from the Support the Hope program, and then the last one, of course, is, uh, shop with a cop, and that, and that number is wrong. Instead of Brazel Millie Company giving us 2,500, they reduced that to $1,000, which is on a revised document that we received tonight, that all of you received that. They should have just put it into your hand. And there's a letter on the back, it was a reviso from Brazel, indicating their, oh, I hear it is, right here. Seeing their desire to give us $1,000. Okay. Does the chair hear a motion, we approve all these collectively, or do we handle them singly?
If there's no question, Mayor, I move that we do it collectively.
Okay, is there a second to that?
It's a motion.
All in favor, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Accordingly, okay, all in favor of approving the budget amendments, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, that's done. Okay, the last item is our manager's report. Mr. Raper?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we had a number of activities amongst our departments this past month, beginning with our library. Uh, they've nominated three people for our advisory board for this evening. They're preparing for the Great Cookie Bake Off Ornament Making Event in early December to benefit residents of Autumn Care. Uh, they've also started working on the LSTA Edge Grant Process. That was a grant we were looking at for children's computers last year that's required for, not required, but it's benefiting technology. Um, we've also arranged for exchange of Friends of the Library funds in January, which is around $6,000. Uh, we've arranged to take the leftover stock from the Book Trader Store in Rocky Mount once that store is anticipated to close. And the Police Department, Sergeant Costa is gonna be leaving us, um, shortly, and Officer Mark Withrow is being promoted to the position of sergeant. Um, there's been a press release put out by the PD regarding a commercial burglary at East Coast Rental, six individuals were arrested and two, uh, gators were recovered. That's, gators are the vehicles, not alligators. Um, the Cops and Kids Christmas Shopping Program, for which you approved a budget amendment tonight, that's going to occur on the 15th of December. And our Parks and Recreation Department, Marguerite, has a lot to report. They finished planning and began advertising the Free Family Fitness Fund Series. This series will run every Thursday in January and February from 6:30 to 7:30 at Nashville Elementary School Gym. This is a partnership between the elementary school PTA and local businesses, including Nashville Martial Arts Academy, Key Fitness, Zumba, and Yoga with Cabran. This series aims to promote a family-friendly and fun atmosphere in which families with members of all ages can come and move together during the winter months. Uh, they've planned and began advertising the Santa Workshop and Elf Party. This is a day camp during which participants will make and wrap three presents to give the people in their lives, play games, and participate in other recreational activities. This will run from 8:30 to 3:30 on December 21 at the, also at the Elementary School Gym, and is limited to the first 20 paid applicants. Uh, Marguerite's also working at the elementary school and local churches to set up an after-school tutoring program. The first meet and greet with tutors and students is scheduled for the 12th of December. Tutoring will begin on Thursday, January 4th, and will be held in the cafeteria. In the athletic programs, they're reporting that the All-Star Tournament with Tarboro was held for soccer on November the 18th. Nashville's 8-and-under Boys won, and our 8-and-under Girls team and U-12 co-ed teams played a hard few games, and we hope to continue these types of events in the future as we build our youth programs. Adult co-ed soccer registration is open and will run through the 30th of January. Play will be held on Tuesday nights, possibly Thursday also during the month of February, and players can register individually or with a team. They're also trying adult pickup dodgeball, scheduled for this Thursday night on the 7th, at the Elementary School Gym from 6:30 to 8:30. This is offered as a free event, and an additional date has been added for Thursday, March 1st. They're also beginning the Open Gym Basketball Season for, uh, December 5th on Tuesday from 6:30 to 8:30 at the gym, which is where Chris was here earlier, he stepped out to help run that program. And then the Santa Storytime and Polar Express PJ Party is scheduled for this Saturday in Council Chambers from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Registration for Santa Storytime is required at the library. The movie will begin at 7, and no registration is required. This event is held in conjunction with the library. So as you can see, Marguerite's been quite busy. I'd like to thank Jason Edwards and, uh, Lieutenant Jenkins for coming tonight, and thank Jason for putting together the monthly report for the Fire Department. Uh, they're reporting that 10 of 12 career staff members have completed 80 hours of structural collapse rescue during the past month, and chiefs have received information on the Viper digital radio system. It's my understanding from them, um, that we would need to go to the Viper radio system, that's something we discussed last year in our budget discussions.
Go about doing the worst things, structural collapse.
That's right.
It's not like houses falling down.
It can be houses and other buildings.
It can be houses, ditching, if you're trenching, doing a trench, you have to take yourself in trenches and stuff like that. It's scary. It is scary.
And there, and there's not many fire departments who have trained individuals in that, so we're fortunate to have that. Lieutenant Robbie Bobbit has scheduled a child passenger safety seat check event at Walmart on the 9th of December, and this will take place at Walmart from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Uh, the Fire Department has also partnered with the American Red Cross for a blood drive on December 30th. This will be at the Town Council Chambers and will also take place between 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM. Our Planning Department has received, uh, or is reporting that Nash County has received a $1 million grant through CDBG. They are allocating $150,000 to the Elm Street Drainage Project. This brings total grant funding for the project to $650,000. The Burger King site plan, uh, has been approved for Nash Crossing. Timeline for construction and the grand opening is unknown at this time, but that's looking to go back behind, a lot back behind the Sheetz facility. Uh, there are approximately 40 residential units that have been approved and in various stages of the building process for this fiscal year. This is very exciting, it shows the town is growing and the economy is doing well. This is the highest number for that that we have seen since the recession, and we're also in the process for the next month finalizing the Project Management Plan, or PMP, for the Golden Leaf Elm Street Project, and town staff would love to host a loose-leaf vacuum truck demo if that's something that's desired by the council. We've discussed that in previous meetings. And then, um, lastly, about in the Public Works Department, um, Larry Williams, who's been with us since 1993, is a full-time employee, is gonna be retiring December the 31st. Um, he's put in a lot of time for us, and we're certainly thankful for the service he's committed to the town of Nashville. And also, Fire Chief Randy Goodbroad is also gonna be retiring on the same day, December 31st. He's been with the town of Nashville in that capacity for, for six years now, and we also thank him for his service to the town. Um, and in Human Resources, um, Louis pointed out that we have our agenda meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 27th. Um, we are closed that Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, which is the 25th to 27th of December as, as for, um, Christmas, so we would like to propose moving the scheduled agenda meeting from the 27th to the 28th.
Does the council agree with this? Move it forward one night? Go from Wednesday to Thursday? Okay, everyone's good.
Okay. Okay. Another, another big one, this comes up every year, is what are we doing for garbage collection during the Christmas holiday? So I want to make sure that's made very clear. Uh, we'll be closed that Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and we'll be open the 28th and 29th on Thursday and Friday, so there'll be no bulk pickup that week. On the 28th, which is Thursday, we'll be doing the regular Monday and Tuesday garbage collection, and then on Friday, we'll be doing the Wednesday and Thursday garbage collection. So that's always something we get a lot of calls about, and we want to make sure our citizens are well informed of how we'll be doing that, and that they have their carts available. That's, that concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, our manager mentioned a while ago about having a demonstration for our leaf truck. You know, we, we agreed sort of loosely that once the guys learn how to drive, that we'd all get together, watch them work the thing. Is anybody interested in that? Because everybody's seen a thing working on the streets by now. You want to set up a time for that? Or is everybody happy enough? Everybody happy with it as it is?
I'm happy, I'm happy with the leaf collection, but I, I would like to see that sewer cam in operation.
Sewer cam? Okay, we were talking about the leaf truck. Now, we had one sewer camera demonstration one time, you know, but it's not the one we bought, it's a, like, facsimile model.
Spent a lot of money on that, to see it work.
We'll take the leaf truck thing under advisement right now.
Mayor, if I, if I may, I failed to mention, uh, last thing we packed is Budget Amendment 14. Um, this is not meant to be reapproved, this was approved in a previous meeting, but we wanted to have the record set straight that the $500 given as a donation, it previously was noted it was for the Hope Initiative, this was a donation to go towards police department supplies. So just wanted to get that corrected for the record.
So we got it back in the right place? Okay, very good. Very good. Okay, council comments. Let's start with Mr. Taylor.
Uh, I'd like to thank all the citizens that are here. I've, I've done it in the paper, but for those personally that are here, I'd like to thank you for your support that you, that you gave me on November the 8th, and I promise to continue to be a voice for you, sitting up here in your position. Uh, Ms. Burns, glad to have you aboard.
Thank you.
And I hope I speak for everybody, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, I do too.
I wish we could get more people in the audience to come in at our regular meeting, except from the, when we swear everybody in and just hear all the new appointments, so it's always good to hear what's going on firsthand, so you, because every time somebody else tells the story, it changes a little bit. So if you come in here and hear it for yourself, then we would appreciate it. Just spread the word around. And I hope everybody has a safe and happy Christmas and New Year.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to thank all the people who have volunteered to serve on committees with the town of Nashville. Sometimes it seems to be a very thankless job, and sometimes you're ridiculed when you're you're not really guilty, which is sad to say, but I certainly appreciate each and everyone who does stuff and volunteers to try to make the town better. And I, as Councilman Taylor said, it's always good to sit up here and look outside and see all the faces looking back at you. And I'm glad to hear, and also I'd like to compliment Ms. Burns on being elected, and we look forward to working together.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Taylor?
I'd like to welcome Kate to the council.
Thank you.
And thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
I'm going to choke through it because I'm coughing so much, but I did want to thank the community, just as Mr. Taylor did, for all of your support. I look forward to serving everyone, and I look forward to working with the council and serving with you.
Okay, thank you. Well, Kate, I'm very happy to hear this, and we're looking forward to good association and driving our town forward, because we've got great vision for our town. Okay, all that being said and done, we've come to the end of our work. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and to thank everybody for coming. I have to echo what Mr. Taylor said, the former Mr. Taylor. It's good to see a lot of folks here, because usually it's just one or two people and sometimes none at all, but we give everything the same thoroughness. Okay, all that said and done, Merry Christmas to everybody, and the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, is it adjourned?
Second.
Yes, been moved and seconded, we adjourn. Is there any discussion? If there being none, all in favor, indicate someone saying yes?
Yes.
We are adjourned.